So the second executive session is now adjourned. And we will then begin the regular council meeting. So, good evening and welcome to the February 21st, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting. I'm Deputy Mayor Debbie Burtland, sitting in for Mayor Bassett, who's out of town this week. The next item on tonight's agenda is a study session to receive a high-level update on the planning commission's work on revising the city's residential development standards. So with that, I think I will go ahead and hand it over to Scott.
Actually, if you'd say that.
Okay.
If I could, I just wanted to highlight that council directed staff last week to come back and provide a, really, an update, an overview of how the residential development standards project is going. I delivered. They're here, so I just want to say that I really appreciate the staff for being incredibly responsive and being here. And I especially want to thank the commissioners for being here. They're giving another evening up for the city, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council members, my name is Evan Maxime. I'm one of the, pardon me, I am the Planning Manager for the City of Mercer Island. I'm joined, I think, tonight by three of the planning commission, at least at the moment: Commissioner Mechem, Vice Chair Wyman, and Commissioner Goodman. And I'll jump right into the presentation, if I may, and go from there. I thought I'd spend about 20 minutes just going over kind of a high-level summary of where we are in our process to date, and then spend the remaining time answering any questions or asking the commission to answer any questions that the city council might have, moving from there. There's essentially three basic points I'd like to touch on in the presentation: the approach that the council set us on back when we started this exercise back in October, looking at kind of three phases in the planning commission review, the policy-based analysis. And then, the last item really is kind of looking at some of the notable concepts that were coming out of the planning commission's review, which I suspect prompted some of our conversation tonight. So as the council will remember, back in the fall of 2016, we identified essentially 17 items on our, I think we were calling them at the time, areas of focus for our scope of work. Those are, I believe, summarized in your agenda bill. I'm not going to run through them tonight, if that's acceptable. But the overall scope generally related to building size, the site design, tree retention, division of land, and our permit processing. And the basic concern that I heard from the council and from the community at that time was really around the rapidly changing character of Mercer Island's single-family neighborhoods, and whether or not the residential development standards that we have in place currently are achieving the effect that we want to see on the ground. We've had a lot of public input throughout the process, as the council directed, and as I think the planning commission has been following up on. We've had a number of community meetings. We had one in October, one in January, one just this past February. I think we have, pardon me, I said just this past February. Of course, it's this Saturday. Murray passed it. And then we have our public hearing a little bit later in March, moving forward towards our, oh gosh, I screwed up again. It's in April at this point. And we'll be making a recommendation to you shortly after that. I apologize. We've had a number of road shows. I presented at a Rotary meeting not too long ago. We've had presentations to high school students, some of our community groups, the Building Association of Washington. I believe we have one on the books for our senior citizens. As I think the council has seen, and certainly I've seen, we've received a lot of written comment at this point, informing the staff and, I think, the planning commission. As part of our update, every time we have a planning commission meeting, we are sharing the public comment with our commissioners, and where we can, drawing a connection between the comment and the actual item under review with the commission. We've heard a lot of different comments at this point, and this slide is just intended to capture, again, a summary of the types of comments we've received. You'll see, we've received everything from "don't reduce land values" on down to "too many deviations and variances granted," wanting more privacy from our neighbors, "new homes are too close together," really illustrating, I think, attention in the public discussion and perhaps in front of the planning commission and city council between protecting property values and people's investment in their property, and our community interests in trying to maintain the neighborhood character that we've developed on the Mercer Island over time, and perhaps build into those property values. I want to remind the city council and the planning commission that the planning commission has been undertaking essentially a three-part review process. And we've just finished our second phase, so we have not actually finished our conversation yet. That first phase, which ran from October through December of 2016, was very public-intensive. We were going out to the community, we were trying to make sure that we fully vetted all of the various policy options that were on the table, so to speak, to address the concerns that we'd heard from the community around our residential development standards. And these would have included things like both tweaks to our existing code, maybe modifying our gross floor area, which I'll get to in a moment, and then bringing in some ideas that were fairly creative just to try and address possible other ways of addressing the issue, if you will, neighborhood averaging, things of that nature. From that exercise, we also looked at what is the intent of the regulation that we're looking to modify or add or address, and developing a really clear purpose statement for any change that would be coming out of the planning commission and their recommendation to the council. So not just focusing on the quick fix, which is really tempting, but sometimes gets us the unintended consequence that creates more work for us all over time. Phase two, which we began in January and finished just at the very end of February here, was really taking those initial set of policy options that we identified and refining them down to a couple of conceptual options, a couple of concepts for regulations that we would then draft code around. And I'll explain this further in a moment as I get into the details, but what we're doing is moving from a very broad funnel, if you will, down, we're at essentially the midpoint or slightly past two-thirds of the way in the funnel, and the regulations themselves at the back end would be the narrowest part of that funnel shape. Which, of course, is our phase three, which we have not finished yet. We actually plan on starting that in March, likely with mid-March, as our first touchback with the full planning commission, possibly with a subcommittee before then. Where we're looking at the specific draft regulations, looking at the proposed amendments, and identifying tweaks in the...
Hold on just a minute.
Pardon me. I've had a fair bit of coffee at this point, so I'm cranking along. The idea with this draft regulations is to look for a couple of things. Did we achieve the effect that we were trying to get when we started this whole exercise? So does it actually look right? Are we doing our beta testing? Are we doing a couple of scenario projects to make sure that we're actually getting the result on the ground that we need? We haven't done that yet. We haven't written the regulations to do it yet. Another aspect of this will be looking for further refinements, further clarifications that are necessary as part of our rollout. I'll touch on it if the council desires, but we might want to look for things like our legal non-conforming standards. We're making a change to our residential regulations. Should we look at what our legal non-conforming standards say and make sure that we haven't created a problem that we need to address further on? So, phase one, the policy discussion. I've touched on some of this already, but the basic tension here is maintain as-is versus managing the change over time to our neighborhoods.
You go versus what?
Managing the change that's occurring in our neighborhoods. So looking at really which regulatory tools would fit Mercer Island's objectives. Identifying the purpose of those changes. One thing that's notable, at least to me, is that we don't have clear purpose statements in our various chapters related to these regulations. Purpose statements provide guidance both to your city staff and to the development community, and frankly, to the community at large, as to why that regulation is in place. During this phase, we looked through more than 30 different ideas in terms of potential changes, concepts that we could look at, and we winnowed it down to, I think, right around 15 or 16, depending on how you want to count. The second phase, we put together our evaluation forms. You recall, this is one of those tools I showed the city council when we were beginning our scoping exercise, where we try and evaluate the 15, 16 different items in a more thoughtful, thorough way to evaluate, are we achieving the effect that we wanted out of that proposed concept? Are we seeing a building reduction? What are the negative consequences of that? Are there impacts to property values? Are there, what are the positive effects? Are we seeing a smaller house? Are we seeing a house that's more compatible, if you will, with the existing homes around it? Tied that back into the public input, so public comments that were available when those evaluation forms were put in place were referenced on the evaluation form, so the commission could go back, look at the specific public comment, look at the evaluation form, and give it some good thought.
So Evan, I hate to interrupt. We are a little short on time, and I think people probably are pretty excited to understand what some of the findings have been so far.
So I think there's three main ones I would call to the city council's attention tonight, because I think these are the three that have probably prompted the most change. The first would be this gross floor area discussion. As the city council, no doubt, knows, we currently limit the gross floor area of a new single-family home, or an addition on a single-family home, to 45% of the lot area. And I provided a table here on the right-hand side of the slide, which summarizes how that calculation works and the planning commission's proposal to change it. So, on the left-hand side of the table is a column of just general lot areas. And we start at 6,000 square feet on up to about an acre, 43, 560. The second column from the left is our 45% gross floor area standard, as it is today. The planning commission has asked us to look at reducing that by 5% gross floor area, so reducing it from 45 to 40, which you can see then results in a single-family home square footage that is somewhat reduced. And the right-hand column, of course, reflects the actual delta between the existing and the proposed. Point of that table is to give you a sense of scale. It's roughly an 11% reduction in the floor area that you would have had under 45% compared to the 40% standard.
But with no change in the rules for computing gross floor area, which now effectively on many lots allow you to actually exceed 45%?
There's been, we talked about a couple of different changes, and the planning commission at least has given preliminary guidance around this. So again, I want to emphasize to the city council, I don't think it's, the planning commission has not finished their review, and that last critical step of did we actually get the effect that we were trying to achieve, has not occurred. But we did talk about exterior decks enclosed on the building in some fashion, so rooftop decks in particular. We talked about the basement exclusion that's built into our code right now. And we talked about garages, and whether or not those should be excluded from gross floor area. The preliminary direction from the planning commission, at least at the moment, was to stick with our current calculation and look at the effect of just the change to the standard, and then we can tweak further as needed in our phase three. The other part of this change, if I can just get it on the table, and then I'll be happy to answer questions if need be, was to look at establishing a zone-based maximum gross floor area based on your zoning designation. I threw out some numbers for the planning commission to consider, which I'm now regretting because they were kind of in-the-weeds type numbers, and I don't think the commission was willing to go with those. What they did say is, yes, the idea of a cap, if you will, on gross floor area based on your zoning designation makes good sense, provided it's rational, and it's something that's fairly understandable to the public. For example, and this is only by way of illustration, it's not intended as a recommendation at this point. If we looked at these lot areas on the screen and assumed for the moment that the zoning designation was R-8.4, a resulting lot most commonly in a subdivision then would be 8,400 square feet, 40% on that R-8.4, if that lot was 32,000 square feet, would be a 12,800-square-foot home, which is large. The planning commission was interested in looking at, should there be a cap in that zoning designation of, say, again, by way of example, 5,000 square feet? What that does is it reduces the temptation for someone to buy up maybe four or five existing lots in the R-8.4 zoning designation, consolidate them, and then build a very large home. And recall, that type of scenario was one of the ones that the city council wanted to address. And of course, property value is something that we've been talking about a lot in the context, of course, related to gross floor area. I'd just touch on it for a moment, if I may. I would note that the way this is being discussed right now in front of the planning commission is as a holistic island-wide change to a standard that's applied evenly across the island. So if we see a reduction island-wide in the size of the home that can be built, you're not seeing an equity issue, if you will, in the reduction in that floor area, the same way you would see if we were to take the R-8.4 and have one GFA standard and R-9.6 and have a separate GFA standard. I think you would see a depression in the property value. That's been my experience, based on what the real estate and development companies will tell me.
You would see a depression in the...
The property value of specific lots subject to the zoning designation change, or the zoning change, pardon me. This isn't a rezone, as it's sometimes been characterized. But it's an area-wide. And if we recall kind of our basic economics here, area-wide depression, over time, the market would relift those property values up, more so. I'm going to push on to the next concept, if I may, because I'm aware I have only a few more minutes.
There's limited time, but I know, council, if you have any clarifying questions, please, please go ahead on this particular slide, or do you want to hold them to the end?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great. Consensus is we will hold tight.
I only have two more of these to touch on. So lot coverage is the other, is the second fairly notable concept that we're looking at tweaking. Our lot coverage standard right now focuses on impervious surface and limiting the amount of impervious surface on a site. On a flat lot, we would expect the maximum impervious surface or lot coverage to be 45% of that site. And it's important to note that when we're looking at 1902, we're focusing on the zoning regulations. We're not talking about our drainage standards, which are subject to the stormwater manual, or our critical area standards. We're looking at our zoning standards. So I think the planning commission, in evaluating this, has asked the question of, does the lot coverage standard, as it's currently drafted, actually achieve and address the effect that we're trying to achieve? Meaning, are we concerned about the amount of area that's used for pavement on the site, a driveway, when we're concerned about bulk and aesthetics and scale of homes relative to each other? I think the planning commission's conversation essentially concluded that really looking at a building coverage standard would be more appropriate than a lot coverage here. When I say building coverage, I'm trying to describe a standard that would focus on the size of the building footprint as a percentile of the lot area. So I'm not focusing on all the other stuff that might be impervious surface, I'm looking at the building footprint as a percentage of the lot area. The planning commission looked at this fairly thoroughly. The way we drafted that initial standard for the conceptual discussion was to make sure that both the building coverage standard and the gross floor area standard would be meaningful standards, meaning that they both would limit a single-family home being constructed on the site. What that does, if you are to maximize your gross floor area and you have a meaningful building lot coverage standard, it encourages the construction of a two-story, single-family home, because your building lot coverage will constrain that first floor. We initially set this up as what's sometimes referred to as a 60/40 ratio, where the first floor could be 60% of your gross floor area, your second floor would be 40%. We did that for some reasons, I can explain further if you want, but that's how we drafted it. I think the planning commission, and as I understood their discussion when they evaluated the concept, expressed a concern around that building lot coverage, and it took two forms. One was, we have an aging population on the Mercer Island, and we may want to allow for single-story construction that would maximize gross floor area on the site. The second concern was, if our concern is bulk and aesthetics and the size of a new home relative to the size of the existing home, do we really want to encourage two-story buildings? Based upon that type of discussion, I think for the moment, the planning commission has set aside the lot coverage standard for our initial concepts. This is one of the ones where I think we've heard enough public comment, both at a staff level and at the planning commission level, where we want to explore this question further. It is still under review. The other thing I'll note, the city council was very clear about impervious surface deviations being a problem, if you will, and this was something we talked about with the planning commission. If we kept the lot coverage standard as-is today, we would need to revisit our impervious surface deviation criteria. So this is, again, I'm just illustrating, we're in phase two, we've not finished our full review at this point. Lastly, on lot coverage, planning commission has taken some action around recommending, at least again at this conceptual stage, a tree retention standard. Tree retention, of course, limits construction activity, limits paving on a site. If you retain the tree, you can't pave underneath it. We've also seen a preliminary direction around front yard landscaping, 30% of the front yard setback area being landscaped. These are things that perhaps act as a proxy in limiting the amount of impervious surface on a single-family lot. And I'll push on to the last notable concept, and then I'll shut up. Third item I'd like to call to the city council's attention is really some clarifying language and direction around our tree retention, our tree standards as a catch-all. Planning commission's made some preliminary recommendations, preliminary direction to staff, if you will, around creating a tree permit process that's a little bit more clear in terms of its administrative requirements, when a tree permit is required. It allows for the, clarifying just the permitting requirement, allows for your city staff to have kind of a thoughtful review of, should tree retention be required for critical area reasons, for tree retention reasons, for other reasons? And it allows us to engage in a little bit of accounting. So sometimes what we'll see is, what we were referring to at the planning commission is gaming the system, where someone will clear an entire lot and then apply for the subdivision. When they do that, of course, we don't really have a meaningful way to require tree retention. By addressing this through a tree permit exercise, we have a more reasonable way of applying the standard the council may adopt. We are looking at a specific retention standard for new single-family homes, what we're characterizing right now as large additions, so not the small expansion of a kitchen, but a very large addition, and then, of course, for new division of land, so subdivisions, short subdivisions, things of that nature. Planning commission's given some direction around protection standards, more explicitly than what we have in our tree retention code. And then last, looking at specific replacement requirements and fee and lieu.
And what?
And fee and lieu options. So I'll come back to phase three. Phase three really is preparing the draft regulations for the planning commission to begin their final round of review, which is what's occurring in the next few months here. Putting together our SEPA determination, our notices for public hearing, things of that nature. That holistic review of the draft regulations, again, seeing if we're getting the effect that we're looking for out of this exercise or not, final refinements, and at the end of that exercise, of course, the public hearing, the deliberations, and their recommendations to the city council. And with that...
Well, thank you, and definitely a very big thank you to the planning commission, because not only is this in and of itself a big piece of work, but we've decided to add more to your plate in the last few weeks. So we thank you for all your hard work and your commitment to these processes. So I know that council has some questions. Benson?
This is actually a process question. And I just want to, well, again, thank the planning commissioners for all the hard work that they've, and time that they've put into this particular project. I'm just curious, you know, obviously we finished phase two. General questions would be, the phases that have been set up, is that something that has worked? Is there something that you might want to change going forward, so that as we get to the finish line? And also, whether or not you feel like you've had enough resources and assets that have been devoted to this project? So that's kind of just general questions for the commissioners.
Maybe we should, should answer that. The, and, you know, compliments to staff, and, you know, to Evan in particular for structuring this in a very orderly and sequenced way, going from the high-level in general, drilling down into the specifics. I think it's really helped us all focus on what the intent is and what we're really trying to achieve. And, you know, I should mention also that at the very beginning of the process, Evan pulled together a number of examples of how different jurisdictions across the country, local and several California jurisdictions, approach residential development and how their procedures and standards are crafted. And I think that was very helpful and given us a perspective on how we could do it. But I think overall, you know, the process has been structured orderly and efficient.
Any additional resources, you think? I mean, have you properly staffed, or do you folks feel you need more by way of staff?
I think the only thing that we're a little tight on is the graphics budget with makers. We're going to try to make it work with the budget that you've given us, but if, when it, I think, when it comes to you for deliberation and discussion, you may desire some additional graphics work, and there may need to be some funding for that, but I don't know at this point. That's the only thing that we can think of.
Wendy?
So thank you for your work, totally appreciate that. I know it's difficult, and there's lots of opinions out there on all this activity. So Evan, you said you started with this list of 17 items, and then you said you narrowed it down, but I see a list of 14 items being looked at. You've mentioned three tonight that already kind of raised a lot of questions for me, and I appreciate your trying to put a package together in the next few months, despite the new work items we've added to your plate. So my biggest question is, is there enough time to give our public and our stakeholders enough of an opportunity to review all this? Like, so the meeting on Saturday, if this is fully baked, what are we getting there, and how will it help inform the writing of the code that you're going to do eventually?
So, there were a couple questions there, and maybe I can parse them out to you, but if I may. The meeting on Saturday, I don't want anyone to have the impression that the code is fully baked for the meeting on Saturday. The idea there is essentially to share information with the public, probably around the most, my sense, the most controversial items that are being discussed at the moment. So we have a good set of questions that we can get from the public and a good shared understanding before we get to the public hearing in April. So that's kind of the idea behind the February presentation. City council, I'm painfully aware, if you will, that the city council made it very clear they wanted to see a recommendation this spring, and I'm aware that I've stretched that a little bit already with other workload items, and frankly, you have added more to our plate. I think there's probably two parts to the answer on, do we need more time? We have good momentum right now, in terms of trying to get this, in my opinion, out of the planning commission in a good, timely fashion. We are working about at capacity in terms of trying to get that material put together for planning commission and the recommendation. Is that...
Yeah.
So more on the plate probably is going to create more delay at this point.
And we, well, and we've sort of split up the work, so Evan is going to continue shepherding this project forward in more of an oversight role, and Allison is also doing a lot of the public outreach and working with the community and community comments, and I will be working on the three ordinances related to the moratoria that you passed last week. So you'll see me rather than Evan and Allison on those. So that's the way we were able to manage that workload.
And then my other question had to do with sort of benchmarking against other communities. So are we looking at what it means to go from 45 to 40 gross floor area? And I know tree retention and canopies and vegetation management is a huge issue just in itself, depends if you're on a flat lot or down in the ravine somewhere, what size of property you have, like, that alone is huge. So are we looking at what other communities are doing, and kind of what best practices are in this single-family code business?
Yeah, we have been, and we are continuing to do so. If I can use Commissioner Goodman's notebook as a prop for a moment, that's the body of information we've provided to the planning commission at this point, which includes a fair amount of evaluation, both of jurisdictions in our vicinity, Medina, Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland, et cetera, and a set of jurisdictions that we found kind of on the West Coast, western half of the United States, where we have maybe more similar characteristics. Santa Barbara's the one that comes to mind. We've looked at some of those cities down in California.
Jeff? Jeff?
I may come back, but on philosophical level, I mean, some people, you talked a little bit about, to some extent, people are coming to you and when you're getting the public comment, that the problem is with the current code. Others saying the issues arise from either gaming or exceptions that are granted to the code. How are you keeping sort of separate the notion of is the issue the code of today or is the issue the exceptions to the code?
Well, I can tell you, I'm also overseeing the review for compliance with the code and I could not have made it more clear in my mind, at least to our staff, that we need to give full meaning to the code provisions that we have today. Having said that, some of the code provisions we have today are hard to give meaning to. And I mean that respectfully, but they are not something that if I were looking at, for example, a deviation for impervious surface. We have sites that request a deviation for impervious surface. They're constrained by geologically hazardous areas, seismic hazard areas, on the lake shore. And the criterion is that the deviation will mitigate that geologically hazardous area. I'm not sure how to give that meaning in a way that's both true to the science and true to the City Council's intent behind that criterion, but it is one of the criteria that we have to work with. So to answer your question, I think we have both maybe a cleanup exercise, if you will, in trying to make sure that our code speaks to the intent that we're putting together at this point, both in its criteria and in its standards, criteria for any exceptions that the council may choose to leave in, and the standards that we adopt. So the question earlier was around, how do we define gross floor area? We're aware that we have an administrative interpretation around gross floor area. That interpretation should likely make its way into the definition of gross floor area as part of this update. And then the council can tell us if that's correct or not, or the Planning Commission can tell us if that's correct or not. And the same will be true if we keep any of the deviations. Again, this will be part of the package that we present to you. We have fence side deviations. Are the criteria in those deviations correct? I think a lot of the comment I hear today is those criteria make no sense. And I'd agree with someone, but they are the criteria I'm required to administer. So what you should be seeing with this update is criteria that I think are more on point, Planning Commission thinks are more on point to what you're trying to achieve with a fence side deviation, if you keep that as an item at all.
Dan?
Thanks, Evan, for all the explanation and thanks to the Planning Commission. I sat through the December meetings, but unfortunately was out of town in January, so didn't have a chance to see what was going on in January, but look forward to getting back and watching the meetings. I think it's fascinating to just watch the back and forth. I am a little concerned about a couple of things you said and, I mean, my sense of at least the majority of the council when we went into this process was to make sure we ended up with a, something that would address what was perceived by, again, what I, and I can't speak for majority, but I believe that my recollection with majority wanted to make sure we ended up with a code which protected our neighborhoods, enhanced our community. And so I, when it comes back to us from the Planning Commission, I will, that will be at least the lens through which I view it. And I, so when you talk about impervious surface, getting rid of that completely and not then putting in a building coverage issue, I mean, from what I read from the agenda bill that you gave us, basically if you had a lot which didn't have any trees that had to be protected, you could end up with a lot which is entirely concrete except for 30% of a 20-foot front yard setback. So the entire rest of the lot could be paved over. And to me, that would, if that's the result of where we end up with, that would be troubling. So I understand, I understand some of the efforts, what you're doing, but I think it's really important, you know, when you say that you want to encourage single-family and therefore you don't put an impervious surface standard in, but then you end up with a two-story house without an impervious surface standard. So you've tried to create a solution, but you don't necessarily, if you don't achieve the solution, then you've lost both the goal as well as the protection for the environment that you had in there as well. So somehow we, I believe we need to end up with, you know, if you're, we need to make sure we end up with something that is consistent with what the original council direction, as well as we can then look at the potential outcomes of the new code and say, what do we end up with? What's, you know, how can this code be manipulated if someone was so inclined? And that's something I'd be concerned about. The last thing I would mention is I have always been concerned as to what actually happens in the as-built situation versus what's submitted to the city and in terms, particularly of impervious surface and floor area ratio. And I'm hoping that there is some sort of verification process which comes out of this where it could be just requiring an engineer or surveyor or someone to certify to the city that something has happened, that the as-built is actually per the plan. I'm not asking for you to send out staff to start measuring things, but I think it's, it would be appropriate to make sure that what, something isn't going on out there that, because no one can expect, no one should assume that our inspectors have the time or the resources to look over, start measuring square footage and stuff like that. And I would hope that we could get some sort of certification process built in to give the community some sort of certainty that what in fact our code is requiring is in fact what's being built on the ground.
And we already do that to some extent today, especially with building height, if something's close to the maximum building height or close to the current impervious surface limits. But I agree it should be codified and the criteria spelled out where we might require that.
May I maybe speak to Councilmember Grous' second to last point? What I hear you saying, sir, is that we don't want to end up with a recommended code that does not address the concerns that the council initially started this process for. And in particular, looking at maybe the holistic review of that regulation. A moment ago, we alluded to the resource question in Makers. I think that was part of what we were hoping Makers would do for us is some of that, what I like to call beta testing, but I'm not sure that's really the right term to use. It's kind of running projects through the new code to see what the end result is. Certainly, I understand the concern over lot coverage and I think the example you used a moment ago, paving the entire backyard, was something that some of the commissioners heard in the public testimony two or three weeks ago now. And I suspect if we asked the commissioners, they would, you know, they're right here, so perhaps I should shut up and hand it to them. But that would be something they would want to talk about further and as part of our third phase of review. And can I hand it over to one of the Commissioners?
I'm happy to. Yeah, I'd say we have limited time, but I think it would be really helpful if each of the Commissioners did want to take the opportunity to address, council, anything that's really struck you or that you would want, you would want us to focus on in the coming weeks.
I guess to address the previous surface, as Evan said, we have to do the beta testing, but part of the reason we made the break is we have an architect on the Commission and she's noted that it's very confusing to have impervious surface requirements in the engineering code and then also in the zoning code. And so we kind of tried to make a break so that there'd be one impervious surface standard. Now, we haven't gotten into the detail where we actually look at how does that standard actually work, you know, with the new regulations we're looking at, but it is something that's very top of our mind and we've been thinking about it. So it's not as though we're attempting to implement a code that has no impervious surface standard, only that we're trying to make sure it's regulated sort of in a logical way. I guess that's as much as I'd say to that. And in terms of more general, the process has been wonderful. I'm really, really excited to get to Phase Three and just see what happens with, you know, the code that comes out, the test that comes out. It's been hard to hold back because you want to like know what's going to happen, but of course, the process works quite well. So that's all.
First, I'll just state for the record, Daniel Hubbell, I came in late and apparently I had the wrong time for the meeting. So I'm glad I showed up early for seven o'clock. The only thing that I'll add, because I just came in at the end of Councilmember Grous' comments, is one of the philosophies that we've looked at and sort of discussed as a group is regulating the things that we want rather than regulating the things we don't want. So taking a more prescriptive, per se, approach to this is how much open space you must have versus here's how much coverage you are limited to, if that makes sense. So an additive form of looking at how much green space needs to exist in the front and side yards, so forth. And so that was the only thing I think I would add, but Commissioner Goodman, I think, made a good point of where the crux of our, the other, a part of the way we've approached this was just how do we reconcile against the disparate between land use and building code? So, sorry for being late.
Thank you for taking the time to learn more about this. I also wanted to add that in our deliberations, we have been quite actively thinking about how to avoid possible gaming of the system. So for example, in the discussions of subdivisions and short flats and long flats, looking at what some of the possible consequences could be and how you can structure that so that it minimizes the opportunity to game the system without creating negative incentive. I also wanted to just say something briefly about the issue of gross floor area versus impervious surface, which is, I felt that it was a very important thing for accessibility and not just for the aging of the population, although that's probably going to drive a lot of the need for more physically accessible housing, but that adopting a standard that proactively encourages building to two stories rather than being relatively neutral on whether somebody is going to build two stories or one story. I felt personally, and I think the Commission agreed after some discussion, that we want to be neutral in terms of how many stories do you put. And we've also had a number of discussions about how to do, how to minimize bulk. I mean, as Commissioner Hubbell said, that regulating what we want rather than what we don't want, how to approach these things in a way that does not dictate the style of building that people build, because some people may prefer more modern buildings, some may prefer more traditional type of thing. And that's not our place to regulate that. So looking at ways of making sure that the standard is neutral with respect to that as well. And that is responsive to some of the feedback we've gotten from the public. And I'm also very excited to see this next phase and for people, for the residents of Mercer Island to be able to have something more solid to tune, but not so solid that they can't form it still. Thank you.
Just to reassure the council, the 17-point list that you gave us as our scope has really been the foundation of the work that we've done. It's really helped to structure the process and gives us touchstones to make sure that we're addressing the issues that you've asked us to address. The one concrete illustration that was brought to us by Makers, the consultant, when we were talking about the differences in effectiveness of controlling, managing floor area ratio versus, you know, building area versus impervious surface, I think brought us to a place of, at least in terms of the graphics that we were looking at, at that point was that controlling floor area ratio was the best way to address the concern about house size. Now, the example that Councilman Grous gave is kind of a different take on the issue. And to date, I think we've gone in the direction of trying to address that through landscaping and tree retention and trying to make impervious surface coverage and engineering, leave it as an engineering standard, but get to the same type of limitation through other means. But that does have to be tested in the next phase.
Okay, well, I mean, again, an overwhelming amount of work that you've all been through. So thank you for that. What really has struck me is all of you seem to be enthusiastic, and I think we are too, for, you know, whether it's beta testing or stress testing, whatever it is, but to see the realities that come out of some of these revisions that you're proposing. So just a quick moment for public PR, the meeting is on Saturday at West Mercer at 9:30?
Correct. 9:30 till noon.
Okay, great. And what will be covered there? Do you want to...
We'll be having an open house for the first 45 minutes with boards covering kind of the key concepts that are under consideration by the Commission. And then we'll have about a 30-minute presentation from Evan, going over some of the things we've heard tonight and a few additional concepts with a bunch of graphics that Makers is currently producing to help make these concepts easier to understand. And then we'll have about an hour and 15 minutes for Q and A with the Commission. So we're trying to facilitate a discourse between residents and stakeholders with the Commission. Yeah, there won't be small tables this time, it'll be a large group.
It's an open house environment. Okay, great. Well, with that, thank you so much for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Council, do we need a five-minute break? Okay, so we'll be back at 7:05. Okay, Counsel, I think we're going to reconvene. Wendy, Jeff, I think we're going to go ahead and get started. Not much. Actually, we have a fairly, fairly light agenda, relatively speaking. Ally, are we ready? Okay, great. Well, we've just concluded our study session, and our next item of business is appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item. Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and limit your comments, please, to three minutes. Note that the expanded rules regarding public comment are hanging on the chamber door if you need further explanation. And with that, I would just say, we have a small council tonight. As you can see, we're missing a few people. Equally, after the recent weeks of packed council meetings, it seems like a very small, intimate group we have here. So, welcome to the down-scaled version of City Council.
Oops. Good evening. My name is Carolyn Boatsman, and I want to thank the Planning Commission and for all the good work done today. There's, I think, a lot of great ideas in the draft so far, the direction they're heading. I have a few concerns, a few things I think might be missing. My biggest concern is I'm not in agreement with the Planning Commission's decision to do away with the impervious surface limit. I think this goes against the city's intention to encourage low-impact development, as stated on the city's website devoted to this intent. There is no impervious surface limit in the engineering code. The engineering code only tells you what you have to do to deal with the surface water runoff that you generate. There's no limit established in that code. If you remove the impervious surface limit from the residential design standards, there is no impervious surface limit. This is an area of Mercer Island's code, which I think is very effective that surrounding cities don't have, and I really think we would do well to keep it. The goal of low-impact development is to allow rainwater to infiltrate the ground, the key strategy being the reduction of impervious surface. This mimics the natural hydrologic regime, recharging groundwater that discharges to streams during drier months, providing wildlife habitat, and preventing erosion associated with peak flows. Retaining site vegetation is another key strategy. This once-in-decades opportunity to update the code on Mercer Island should be taken to consider integrating more aspects of low-impact development, certainly not removing the impervious surface limit. There's an interest in single-story homes. I think that's very justified and important for accessibility for an aging population. I think it's very important to balance that interest against such a very large environmental impact as doing away with an impervious surface limit. There should be some way to achieve the other goals, both goals together, without removing that limit. I think this will be taking a step backwards for us to remove the limit. I don't think that proposed tree preservation standards will be strong enough or a direct enough way to get impervious surface, more pervious surface. I think we should take the opportunity to reduce the burden of invasive plants in city forests. The city pays contractors to remove invasive species in forests. Citizens groups also do this back-breaking work. Invasive species are established in most cases when birds eat the seeds and deposit them in the forest. A strategy would be for species listed in the non-regulated Class B and C Noxious Weeds of Mercer Island, or of King County, and King County weeds of concern, don't require a permit for removal of those and prohibit their use for replacement trees and in landscaping. Thank you.
Next.
Thank you. My name is Daniel Thompson. I live at 7265 North Mercer Way. I've lived on Mercer Island since 1970. I'm an attorney, and I am intimately familiar with the Residential Development Code. I sent you all a very long email, of course, with attachments. I've sent you before. I've sent you letters in 2015, 2014. I've gone over these issues, and the reason I think that they are so critical is because the credibility of this council and the city is very tenuous right now. We have a budget that is filled with IOUs called Contras that depend on the citizens approving two property tax increases. And I can tell you, I know almost all the citizens on this island and the groups and work with them, beginning with Koval, Library, Kite Hill, Light Rail, and they are not going to pass those property tax increases unless they get meaningful residential development reform. I've attended the meetings. I've read the minutes. I've talked to Evan. I've sent you letters, and I'm telling you, I'm very disappointed in this proposed plan. But at the same time, I've tried to tell you from the beginning, this residential code rewrite was never necessary. We passed a code in 1992 to address McMansions, and it worked for 25 years until Scott Greenberg arrived at the city of Mercer Island and passed two impervious, I mean, two administrative interpretations. Now, I bet most of you don't even know what those are, and I bet most of the Planning Commission members don't. Now, I've only seen Dan at these meetings at the Planning Commission. I haven't seen anyone else, but although I've got to give a lot of kudos to Jeff for starting this process so we don't do another nightmare like the Town Center process, that you give your feedback to the Planning Commission and you hear back from them. There is one simple thing that we are looking at. We are looking at the gross floor area of a house to its lot ratio. That's called massing. We have a comprehensive plan. When Evan says, and I admire Evan, I like Evan, when he says, "We don't have a purpose plan," we do. It's called our comprehensive plan. The problem is, I don't think very many of you have read our residential code or subdivision statutes or permit statutes. And so what you do is you turn over these important decisions to a Planning Commission who has four brand-new members. We spent months educating them just on our code. I'm going to ask you to please read the letters and the emails I sent you, even though they are long. Take a look at this and get involved. This residential code rewrite, Evan started off with a very good one, and it has really gone off the rails. You need to also address the pending permits, since you had no moratorium. You promised the citizens that you were going to give them relief from this abusive development. These permits have vested. They've been filed. They will be developed under the current code, and the citizens are going to see the same abusive development unless you have Scott Greenberg's administrative interpretations reviewed by outside council, because they have never been reviewed by the city attorney, Planning Commission, or this council, and they are code amendments. And you're going to find out if you get rid of those interpretations. We have a very good code. We always did. And the one that we're proposing now is worse. It's worse. It's going to result in bigger houses, larger houses for the lot.
I'm sorry, I have to ask it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Ira Appleman, 9039 East Shorewood Drive. Most of the island's major problems have been caused by a city council that has its own agendas rather than working for the interests of all islanders. This sad fact is true of I-90, where the city council signed a 2004 amendment that traded away our rights for a vague promise of mitigation. I agree with the moratorium and other steps recommended by or taken by staff, but claim that our biggest problem remains a city council defiled by cronyism. The best current example of cronyism is the Mercer Island Center for the Arts, or MICA, which not only destroys Mercer Island, Mercerdale Park, but seriously threatens island transportation. First, MICA precludes the use of 76th Avenue Southeast to mitigate traffic congestion. The traffic analysis conducted by KPG makes clear that the elimination of the bridge center lanes could cause considerably increased traffic in the town center. One option to reduce traffic congestion would be to open up 76th by extending Southeast 32nd a few hundred feet from the front of Farmers Insurance Building to the back and connecting with 76th. This street extension runs between Farmers and Mercerdale Park. As a part of its project and without permission, MICA has taken over the entire Southeast 32nd right-of-way, blocking forever the connection between 76th and 77th. The council majority is behind this project, even though it destroys Mercerdale Park and violates Street Vacation City Code. Second, MICA violates the city moratorium passed to assure I-90 mitigation and thus continuing to process the MICA application puts, MICA applications puts moratorium at risk. The city adopted a moratorium for any project that will, quote, "cause any locally-owned intersection to decline below level of Service C." The November 2016 traffic analysis conducted by KPG showed that a number of intersections would fall below LOSC if the I-90 center lanes are closed, and thus, any additional traffic from MICA would make those intersections below LOSC. MICA, in its latest traffic study submission, neglected to include the KPG data, even though that report was submitted two months before the MICA traffic study. The city must cease immediately processing the MICA applications because exempting MICA from the moratorium risks invalidating the moratorium, damaging the city's strategy to get I-90 mitigation. The city council must abandon its MICA cronies and come together with all islanders to protect our common transportation access.
Do we have any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Peter Struck, and I reside at 9130 Southeast 54th Street. I'd like to comment tonight on tonight's agenda issue regarding the advertising and naming rights at Island Crest Ballpark Field, or I like, as I like to think about it, the commercialization of public land. Since there is no concrete recommendation from staff, I'd like to provide mine. To jump right to the conclusion, I believe the council, if they so wish, grant a one-year interim approval, or essentially a beta test, on the specific project, pending a more robust review of how the city wants to treat its public space in the parks with respect to advertising and naming rights. As you know, about a year ago, in the MICA lease review, there was a tacit approval for advertising and naming rights in Mercerdale Park. Now, we have a proposal for Island Crest Park. What's next? Before we use this drip-drip approach to make policy, let's step back and take a more holistic approach, seems to be the word of the night, and hopefully include the school district so we have a uniform policy for the whole island. For example, to allow the baseball field at Island Crest to have advertising, but not at other venues such as the Islander Football Stadium, seems a bit inconsistent to me. Yet clearly, as the city faces structural deficits going forward, looking for new revenue sources such as this should be welcome, but fully vetted. As provided in the briefing material, City Code 9.30.040 governs the posting of signs and posters in the parks. However, the code further states that the park director shall establish general rules and regulations. As I understand, such general rules and regs have not yet been developed. Therefore, before we give any permanency to such proposals like this, let's have a general framework to understand what we think should be permissible. Just as a couple of maybe kind of ludicrous examples, but maybe not. Could we or should we have advertising allowed along the trails of Pioneer Park or next to art pieces in Sculpture Park? Also, the current code is absent any discussion of what is appropriate advertising. I'm not sure a city staffer wants to be put in a position of being an arbitrator of good taste here on the island. Now, I realize that there are many more important issues facing the council this year, so that's why one-year interim approval does make sense for this specific proposal and then gives the council and staff with adequate citizen input some time to figure out really what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? If there's no further comment, then appearances are closed. The next item of business is the consent calendar, which contains payables and payroll reports, meeting minutes from December 5th, January 3rd, January 10th, January 12th, January 17th, January 20th, February 3rd and 6th, and AB 5257, which is the Open Space Conservancy Trust Board Annual Report. So, first, a kudos to Ally for landing a lot of minutes for this session. Is there a motion from council to approve the consent calendar? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes and consent calendar is approved. We now move to regular business, and the first item is AB 5261, I-90 Loss of Mobility Status Report. And welcome, City Manager Julie Underwood.
Good evening, council and community members. Just wanted to update you on all that has happened. Actually, the last two weeks has been really busy. I know I reported at our last meeting on February 13th that we had a meeting and a call with Governor Inslee. That same evening, the council adopted moratoria. In fact, at your next regular business meeting, you will have a public hearing on that moratoria. And if I could ask Scott Greenberg to provide some dates around, there's a lot of work that will go into developing those regulations. So, if he can just share some of the dates so the community just has some awareness.
Thank you. Sorry, caught me a little off guard.
Sorry.
That's okay. So, what we're proposing to do is have the Planning Commission basically complete most of their work on the residential development standards, since they have, as Evan called it, some momentum. To get that done, it also gives us time to prepare the ordinances and fully review them internally and with outside counsel. So, March 29th, we were proposed to bring, at least educate the Planning Commission on transportation concurrency, essential public facilities, and what we're going to do with uses in the I-90P zone. So, just more of an education. So just more of an educational session to give them a really good foundation moving forward with the actual ordinances. That would be Wednesday, March 29th. That's a special meeting. It's the 5th Wednesday. And then May 3rd, we would bring the transportation concurrency ordinance to the commission that we believe will be the most complex of the three different ordinances. So right now, we're proposing a whole meeting for that on May 3rd. And then May 17th would be introduction and discussion of the P-zone amendment and the essential public facilities code amendment. That's May 17th. Public hearing would tentatively be June 7th. There's also a possibility of a meeting May 31st, but we're leaving that slot open. And then their recommendation to you on June 21st. So that's as far as we've calendared out for the planning commission.
Thank you, Scott. And we envision it'll come to the council for discussion and adoption in July. So we have until August. It's a six-month moratoria, so we want to make sure we beat that deadline. Also, last week, the city filed our complaint in Superior Court. Likewise, the city suspended the shoreline substantial development permit. And just to let the public know, this is an item that is not really under the purview of the city council. It's an administrative item. It's typically handled by our Director of Development Services Group. So that letter went to Sound Transit notifying them of the suspension on the 16th, and that letter was from Scott. We also received, oh, I should have also mentioned that Deputy Mayor Bertland and Council Member Grous went to the Sound Transit Board meeting last Friday and presented our letter to Sound Transit. Wow, that afternoon, we got a letter from Sound Transit. So we'll make that available to the community, because that is something that's new. We just received that. And more or less, it's kind of acknowledging the fact that we're moving into this litigation phase. And then something also new happened was Representative Cloverborne has proposed House Bill 2129. And in fact, we have copies. Ally has copies of the bill, as well as how to contact representatives and the governor. But this bill, in effect, would take Island Crest Way access and grandfather that access for all vehicles. So HOVs, single occupant, all vehicles. And so this is something that Representative Cloverborne has proposed. She's also looking to add it as a budget proviso, but the budget doesn't come out until much later. She's very interested in hearing from the community what they think of this proposal. So that's available, and please reach out to her. In fact, all of our delegation representatives and the House Transportation Committee and the governor as well on that. Any questions on any of those items? So...
Julie, can we get a copy of whatever the Sound Transit Board, I understand, passed on Friday regarding litigation? I think they, after executive session, they came out and actually passed something, and who voted for it, who didn't vote for it, just, I mean, I just realized we haven't seen what was passed.
You're right. It would have been a motion. So we'll reach out to Sound Transit and get a verbatim of that motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that's right, to inform the community that, just like the council has to formally act on a complaint, they, the board also had to do that, and they, in fact, did that on Friday afternoon.
Benson?
Yeah, with respect to the suspension of the shoreline permit, what was the, you mentioned that a letter was sent out by Scott. Was there any explanation for the suspension that was stated in the letter?
Scott, would you mind?
In a nutshell, it was that the shoreline substantial development permit requires a SEPA review, and the lead agency in this case was the city, because it's our permit. But Sound Transit submitted their EIS in support of the SEPA review for the shoreline substantial development permit. First condition of approval on the SSDP, the shoreline substantial development permit, was that they had to follow, that was, it was based on the EIS, basically. And the EIS, as you're all aware, assumes single-occupant vehicle access through the Island Crest Way on-ramp. So already, the environmental documentation to support the SSDP is incorrect. So that's why we're suspending it.
And we expect we will be challenged, so that's just something we're prepared for. And we'll, of course, keep the council and keep the community informed on that. Going forward, so as you've...
Julie, can I just, Carrie, do you know whether that action by Scott, is that appealable through court, or is that through the shoreline hearings board? Do you know?
Yes, I do know, and it's through the shoreline hearings board.
So moving forward, we expect to have those regulation changes as part of the moratorium. We also want to continue our outreach and communicating with our community. I'm hoping to, you'll see that over the coming weeks. I, myself, am very interested in reaching out to very active community members. I, in fact, mention Vision Mercer Island. They're a well-organized group, and I think they have access to great experts, and they know our issues very, very well. So I am seeking consultation with them. And one thing I wanted to note in the one-pager plan, I know they're listed under kind of that category. There were some questions around, well, are they going to be doing those specific things like engaging, you know, ensuring coordinated strategy, identifying best-in-class expertise, some of these day-to-day management details, and they're listed as supporting staff? Actually, no, but they are a resource that we would certainly look to. But obviously, this would be largely city staff. But again, I would be looking at Vision Mercer Island for their support, their guidance, and certainly, they have access to some great experts and gifts and talents in our own community. So I'm hoping that will result in some positive movement there. And then also, as I mentioned, prepare and respond to legal challenges. So we expect, this is not something that will fall off our work plan anytime soon. Any questions about any of that? And then, so tonight's action, we're, and if I could have Chip approach, we are asking the council to appropriate additional funds, and Chip will outline where that funding will come from. And then, of course, if we can discuss the strategic operational plan and provide staff feedback on where you'd like to go.
Good evening. For the record, Chip Carter, your finance director. So currently, as a reminder, there's $400,000 budgeted for I-90 in this year's budget, and we're proposing increasing that by $600,000 to round it up to $1 million. That $600,000 would come from two places. On the Fire Station 92 construction project...
If you could slow down a little bit. I'm trying to get everything.
Okay. The Fire Station 92 construction project, we're estimating will have about $300,000 balance in that project. As you will recall, we used a portion of 2015 general fund surplus to help provide some temporary funding for that project until a settlement was reached. That was reached, we received that $330,000 check last week. And so there's still a few bills, legal bills, to pay, but we're estimating about $300,000 that'll be left over. That funding really is general fund surplus funding that's left over, okay? The remaining balance of $300,000 would come from 2015 general fund surplus that has been sitting unallocated. I've been sort of reserving that in a soft sense of the word for a potential capital project. And so what we're recommending is, let's use that $300,000 for this purpose instead. If the council is curious, you know, we do have a rainy day fund, our contingency fund, that is about a $2.6 million and change balance as of the end of 2016. That is available. I'm not crazy about going to that particular source, but it is available for that purpose. And what we're recommending is, let's just increase the appropriation by $600,000 right now to an even $1 million. Let's get a few more months of actual revenue experience under our belt and see how things look. And then we can come back to the council about mid-year. Questions?
Just for fun, can you remind me what that capital project was that we were thinking about doing?
I cannot. It was a subject of litigation.
Jeff?
Chip, did you consider anything else in terms of funding this? Such as, I mean, people talk about the car tab fee, other ways of funding, how did you land on this as opposed to what else you considered?
Yeah, just what's readily available. Now, keep in mind, I don't mean to make it sound like I have $600,000 just laying around. Actually, had some strings attached. It was being reserved for various purposes, so there are consequences associated with this. But it's just money that we can quickly divert to this purpose. In terms of additional funding, I'm not, I don't believe you can use the car tab money for this purpose, as I understand it. However, you could use the car tab money and dedicate it to arterial street funding and potentially free up maybe some gas tax money. I haven't looked at that, but it's that whole kind of domino effect. Use it to free up other funding sources which have less strings attached to it.
Any other questions? Yeah. I think we're still on questions right now. Okay, great. Well, with that, we need to make a motion for this AB. Is there a motion for the packet or otherwise?
I'll make the motion. Move to appropriate $600,000 in the general fund, $600,000 in the general fund for the I-90 light rail litigation and other costs, which would be funded by an estimated $300,000 remaining balance in the Fire Station 92 Construction Fund, and approximately $300,000 from the unallocated 2015 general fund surplus.
Is there a second? A discussion? Dan?
So I'm, I'm not sure I'm going to vote on this one yet. It's not because I don't support funding the litigation, but it reminds me of the old axiom in federal financing, that if you're going to go to war, you've got to make sure you tax people to go to war, and that you don't just pretend that war doesn't have a cost. We just went through a six-month or so budget process, where we were told that the sky is falling, and we got into this wonderful world of contra and budget deficits and development slowdowns and sales tax slowdowns, and literally being told, based upon the staff's best estimates, that we were facing a situation where we were, had our financial backs against the wall. And now we are suddenly appropriating $600,000, taking at least $300,000 of what I had assumed would be available towards this biennium surplus and using that, and then the $300,000 you referred to, for a potential capital project, which is, has not gone away. So I would have much preferred that staff came back and said that this is a very stopgap measure, and that we're going to have to increase revenues to pay for this, and come to us with some proposals to do that. And I would still like to see staff do that. And, I mean, the one that, the only one that jumps out besides what Jeff mentioned is the utility tax. That's the only one that is, we can readily do without actually having to go to a vote. So I would, I'd like to understand, I mean, is there a staff position on, I mean, I don't mean to be argumentative, Chip, but you were telling us for months that we needed to look at revenue increases. And now, I'd like to hear, are you still, shouldn't you still be telling us we need to look at revenue increases now that we're in this situation?
I'm just trying to be flexible. That's the bottom line. I mean, do I want to really appropriate, encourage you to appropriate money for this purpose? No, we have other needs. But here's the bottom line. Understand this. I meant to come back to the council this month on the criminal justice fund, doing away with that fund, balancing 18. It keeps getting pushed because of other agenda bill needs, but it's on your second meeting in March, I think it's the 20th. And so the bottom line is, by getting rid of the criminal justice fund, we will balance 2018. So that's a done deal. And there'll be a little bit of money still left over. And so that is taken care of. But the reality is, I have a number of challenges out there that we're trying to deal with. You mentioned, you know, my revenue estimates. I've been concerned about sales tax. Guess what? January's receipts and February, I just got February's today, receipts, which are from two months prior in both cases, so November and December respectively. Both of those are down compared to the same month a year ago. So finally, I was off in my estimation. I expected a downturn in revenue as the major construction projects in the town center wrapped up, right? I expected that to hit us in the fourth quarter of last year. I didn't see it until January of this year. And so I've got my eye on that. Let's get a few more data points under our belts, and let's see what it looks like, but that has begun, and that is concerning to me.
Yeah, well, so I both feel, I feel two opposite things, and so going to go and vote for this, but be very, very clear that to go forward in what we're doing, I hope to heck that we come to some, you know, solution that doesn't require that we spend $1 million on litigation. At the same time, I think we need to send a very strong signal that we're ready to do it, and we're going to do it. But at the same time, to add this on to our plate and not say that it's going to require additional assessment from our populace, I think is also a mistaken notion, which was the purpose of my question. So, I mean, I really want to make clear that we are going to fund this litigation, and that's, you know, and this is what you've come with tonight. But I also want to say that we have to find a way through some assessment means, and I like progressive ones, and I know some of these others are less progressive, but that we're going to have to increase our income, because we have a new $600,000 that we didn't think we were going to spend.
Benson?
You know, obviously, you know, if litigation ensues and continues, this is going to just be a tremendous drain on our finances. So I think the point's well made. But again, we're in the litigation, we need to fund it fully, and, but I think, long-term, I think it is important to make sure that the community knows that there are, you know, sacrifices are being made. I mean, obviously, the $600,000 could be used for some other purpose, but now it's going to be used for attorney's fees, potentially. So, you know, the community is, has made a choice, the council has made a choice as far as how to use this money. But we probably do need to have this conversation with the community going forward as far as, you know, the ongoing cost of litigation and what we could do to help, again, mitigate the choices that were being made. Obviously, if the community wants to continue to have full services and other projects go forward, we probably will need to look at other revenue sources. So this is just a point in time that we need to make, and I'm certainly in full support of the motion, but recognizing that at some point in time, we need to have a broader discussion about potential revenue enhancements of some sort.
Wendy?
And I would also remind us, in addition to new revenue, we might have to make more painful cuts and decisions about projects we can't do. I also think we can take donations. We got our first $50 check a couple weeks ago. Anyone is welcome to help us with the litigation expenses. So I think we need new revenue. I think we need some cuts. I think we need to be really careful about the property tax notices that showed up in the mail a couple weeks ago. Those have gone up significantly. So I'm going to support this, and I think we... So I'm going to support this and I think we need to look at revenue cuts.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm fully in support of, of the allocation. I think my request to, to Julie and staff would be a worst-case scenario one, and that is the assumption that you're back in front of us in a couple of months needing more funding, understanding or anticipating where that would come from, either within existing resources and/or identifying what those new resources would be and in what magnitude. Because I, you know, I'd like to see a path forward here. I too would like to believe that there might be resolution to this before we go through the full $600,000, but, you know, I've been unfortunately, unpleasantly surprised multiple times over the last year and a half to two years in terms of how the negotiations have gone. So I think that would actually be my request is to be anticipating down the road. Equally, is it just the utility tax that would be an option for us? Are there other methods or measures that would be out there? You referenced sort of a domino effect through the, the tab fees. What would that look like? What kind of revenue would that generate, et cetera? So that's a very long way of saying, if you need to come back to us in the next few months, be it for 200, 400, or even hopefully not more than that, what would be the recommendation and the approach? And while I don't want to get into detail tonight, at some point, we're going to recognize that there are those holes, that the $1 million, it's $600,000 tonight, but equally, it was $400,000 when we did the budgeting, where, you know, what, what it is that we're losing, what it is that we're not going to be able to do because there's a lot of projects on this island, excuse me, that the community's been counting on. And if, if there's to be disappointment, then we need to start to set those expectations accordingly.
Can I just add a few things? Go ahead.
So I, I mean, I, from listening to everyone who's spoken so far, we all seem to be saying the same thing, that we want to hear back. So I'd, I'd like to, I'd like those not to be empty words and that we have an amendment to the motion. So I would propose we amend the motion to say that staff will come back to us no later than the second meeting in April with a update on finances and alternatives for revenue additions and/or expense reductions to pay for the ongoing cost of this litigation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Well, I think, I mean, just, I'm just speaking to what, what everyone said. We've all said we want to do it, so then we should vote to do it and not just, and, and force the, force a discussion of it and not just satisfy ourselves that we've talked about it and then let it go away.
So can I ask?
I think Benson had his.
This may be what you, I mean, I think, you know, we've talked about, we're asking the staff to come back with, you know, the possibility of other revenue enhancements. But again, to Councilmember Wyker's point, that also needs to take into look potential spending cuts as well.
That's what the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. My apologies.
So Chip, is April a reasonable time period?
Yeah, no, no worries from my perspective.
Really? Okay.
And then I think I have to ask the all-important question to Ally and Ellie, whether or not the amendment was sufficiently clear.
I don't have it. I don't have the language because it was said too fast, but I have the recording. So I can't repeat it to you is, is what I'm saying. So I'm comfortable going back and listening to the recording, but it, it's your comfort level if you all know what you're voting.
And, and I'm comfortable. I definitely feel I have sufficient direction.
Okay, great. Well, in that case, we have an amended motion on the table. Any further comment? That's true. We have to vote on the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, going back and voting on the full amended motion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, so passes. Chip, thank you.
Okay.
You have some more work ahead of you as usual, but appreciate the, the assistance. So with that, we're going to be moving on to the next agenda bill item, which is 5258 Island Crest Park Ball Field Advertising and Naming Rights Program. And for that, we're going to welcome Parks and Rec Director Bruce Fletcher.
Honorable counsel, good evening. And we probably can't use this for litigation money, but anyways.
Excuse me, Bruce? I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
No problem.
But I believe our city manager needed to talk to the council about item number two. So sorry.
I'm sorry. We, I. That's okay. I guess maybe if we can, there is in your packet a, just a one-pager on kind of the plan going forward on I-90. Wanted your feedback about that, if there were objections to it. This was, as you might recall, Dave mentioned, he wanted a plan coming back where really the city manager is really the point person on I-90. And so this tries to address that. So it really is a question now for counsel if you object to this or if you see any red flags or any thing you would like to change in this.
Dan?
So I, I mean, what's in here, I don't object to specifically, but what it omits is the, the tie between staff and counsel. I mean, it just, it's, it's silent on what the role of counsel is, other than we're noted as the ultimate decision-maker, but then it, it doesn't say where we're going to interface with this. And I think that, I'm not sure that's a, a discussion to have here, but I, I think that that's what I would assume should be part of, part of the overall plan is, is how we're going to be involved in this process. And it's just not here at this point. So, so that's my concern.
Is there comments?
I'll just say, I, I do like the framework and I like what you've had put in to date. I think they're all right. I mean, again, it's, it's going to kind of be in the execution as opposed to what's on here. I would certainly say for my part in two of the areas, you know, in terms of public engagement and public involvement, I'm glad that VMI is going to be brought in and Joe's going to be talking to you a lot. I would keep that as wide as possible. I mean, there is a very wide range of audiences that will be, I think, in your, your council. And then second, in terms of the outreach, that to be, again, I think what we've heard from the community is more than has occurred in the past, more explanations, your ideas of getting Kerry out there on video, explaining what these moratoria mean and other means of really keeping people educated and informed, and by extension, Sound Transit and WashDOT, educated and informed in terms of what we're really arguing for, I would encourage you to really strongly push towards.
I think you raised an interesting point, particularly calling out Sound Transit and WashDOT. Now, they were, Sound Transit was actually scheduled to be here tonight originally. I think we can all understand why it is that they are not here tonight. Julie, can you provide any update or expectations that we should have with regard to Sound Transit or WashDOT coming in front of the community? You know, not to talk about the litigation per se, but in terms of what they anticipate to be some of the work almost in spite of any litigation, such as what would happen or anticipate to be happening on the city streets. We've also talked a lot about stations, station design, et cetera. Should we anticipate having them come back in general? But also, there's a number of outstanding questions that we have to them, you know, I'm looking at Kirsten, you know, we've, we've been through, when is the South Bellevue Park and Ride closing, et cetera, et cetera?
And we regret that Sound Transit isn't here to address a lot of those questions our community has asked regarding the construction timeline, regarding Bellevue Park and Ride. I mean, there's safety of the rail itself. I mean, there's so many questions. Our community members are really anxious to have Sound Transit addressed. So it's unfortunate that they are not here participating. There is a number of proposed mitigation, and these were mitigations that were identified in the final EIS, Environmental Impact Statement. There's additional mitigation that they're proposing as a result of Island Crest, Crestway access as well as R-8A lanes, lack of use of the HOV R-8A lanes. So they've identified those as well. I think it's really important that the community understand what, what it, what, what is it? Where are they? What does it mean for my morning commute? What does it mean when I go to town center? What does it mean when I access the Park and Ride? I mean, these are things that really Sound Transit can only answer. So I will be asking them to attend a future meeting, to run through those mitigations. We anticipate some of those, maybe not all, but maybe some, maybe others, our community might help us identify as well. So, but again, I think because it's their project, I think it's important that they come out, they explain what the mitigation is. We are aware of what those mitigations are, projects are, but it's really time for them to come out and, I think, address our community on that, have a conversation with our community on that. So that is something I will approach them. They have definitely in our meetings, in our face-to-face meetings, said, we want to continue to work with you. So I will trust that is true. They will want to continue to work with us. So we will certainly invite them, ask them to come out and present that. So when they come, I don't know. They have said, I think they've done this for other projects, that they do typically a pre-construction meeting. Maybe Kirsten can ident.
Sure. Yes. Sound Transit, just as part of their standard protocol, will always go into a community to provide a pre-construction meeting with their contractor so that the community knows what to expect, timelines and project details for any project. And they have told us since last fall that they would be coming to the community and providing that pre-construction meeting.
Let me just add though, you know, we are suing them, so they are probably a little reluctant to come on out and meet with our community. So, so let me just try to manage expectations. I'm going to make the request that they come and they host a meeting to talk about the mitigation. I don't know what they're going to say. So, but I will inform the council and certainly inform our community.
Well, thanks for that update. I would also then just go ahead and encourage the public to continue sending in your questions and your comments and your feedback. Now, I know there's a, a form on the website. Equally, the council members were receiving those questions, forwarding them on to staff so that they can be aggregated, whether they appear face-to-face or whether or not we can even encourage perhaps some sort of stopgap by having them create their own FAQ or Q&amp;A based on feedback from the public might be helpful. But the important thing is, I think, for the community to have a general sense of what it is they're planning and the timelines, let alone whether or not it's perceived to be sufficient. So with that, I think I would, I will double check. Oh, Benson has some further comment?
No, I, well, I just have one comment regarding, well, a couple, but this one-page operational plan. I also wrote down in my notes here that I, I wondered where the involvement or the interaction of the city council was. And I note that obviously you put it, have it down in politics and lobbying, but I just had a question whether or not there's any role for the city council in the outreach, engagement, media portion. So I, I think it's just a matter of fleshing out a little bit more of the actual role of the city council. Otherwise, I'm generally okay with what you've laid out.
And I appreciate that feedback. I certainly understand it's, I believe it's implied, obviously, every decision comes before the city council. But you're right, you have an important role, especially in the way of our reaching out to the media, whether it's reaching out to our community members and to our regional partners. So I, being silent on that didn't mean not including council, but I can see perhaps maybe should have been more explicit on those things.
I just want to thank you, Julie, for pulling this together. I appreciate that you outlined the five different channels that we're going to be working on here. And I would just encourage you to also not just look at the community groups, but the community members who have sent in emails and comments and, you know, names that come to mind, or Sarah Fletcher, Scott Kazinsky, Dan Thompson, Nate Larson, I mean, all the, the names and those emails that go on and on for pages with all the detail and background and history. Dan Grousneau is a huge resource. So, you know, I'll just say use, use the community members as well as the community groups.
Thank you.
Because we have a lot of smart people here.
Okay. With that, and just reiterating that there are so many people, so many groups, so much passion, so much interest that has shown up to be constructive participants and players in this, and it is much appreciated. I know it's been frustrating, but I feel like we are on, we're on a path forward and let's hope that it yields the results that we're looking for. So with that, I think we'll go ahead and close out I-90, and we're going to give Bruce a second chance, second bite at the finger of an apple here.
Great. And again, for the record, Bruce Fletcher, Director of Parks and Recreation. Before you is the new Island Crest Park Ball Field Advertising and Naming Rights Program. As you know, Island Crest Park is a wonderful park used by thousands of kids, teens, families and seniors. Right now, money is tight. So I'm here to talk about an enhancing, enhancement funding opportunity to help pay for the park reinvestment projects. We are currently seeking community donations with a goal of raising $150,000 for another park project there, which includes the lighting and the field project. Last week, David Numura of Century Link presented a check to our city manager, Julia, Julie Underwood, and that was very nice. So, and so far, we have community donations to, at 73,000. So we're still a little bit short. We do have a donation page and PayPal on Parks and Rec website, so look at that website and hit that button. But for the past couple of years, the Mercer Island Baseball Booster Club has made presentations about ball field banner advertisements program and a field naming rights at Island Crest Park. Many Mercer Island baseball parents travel around the state and they see a lot of different ballparks that have advertisement in the outfield through banners, and they thought it would help Mercer Island. There is a potential of selling up to 30 banners in the outfield that would face the grandstand at a $1,000 each. The content would be restricted to family-friendly commercial advertising and would, would not allow ads with alcohol, tobacco, or religious or political messaging. There's another opportunity, and that's field, field naming rights. Out at Island Crest Park, we have a grand, two grandstands, one north, one south. Field naming rights for those would be 15,000 each, and we would try to get a long-term commitment, five to hopefully 10 years. If we were able to sell all 30 banners, we would collect $30,000 annually, and if we sold naming rights of both fields, we would, could collect an additional 30,000. So the grand total up to 60,000 a year that could be reinvested back into the park. We have a large list of improvements at Island Crest Park, and I've listed several on the agenda bill, but the list goes on. If city council supports this alternative funding, we'll need, I will need to establish rules and regulations pertaining to advertisement at Island Crest Park. Before I go any further, there are two key questions before the city council. One, does the council support the establishment of an outfield banner advertising program at Island Crest Park? And two, does the council support the establishment of a field naming rights program at Island Crest Park with the revenues from both being dedicated to Island Crest Park ball field improvements? With that, we'll open up to discussion.
So counsel, any questions for Bruce? So Wendy?
So the $1,000 per year, would that be $1,000 for a five-year contract or just year-to-year?
It'd be year-to-year on the banners.
Okay.
And it could be a test program. It could, you know, but yeah.
Dan, I think you were next.
This is more for Chip. Since you've taught me new words, supplant. How can, how would we be assured that this would not supplant other, other funds that were coming in and so we don't end up with a situation where we're taking an extra, what should be hopefully 60,000 or somewhere, somewhere around 60,000, that is supposed to be incremental for parks and that doesn't just go in, is... for parks and that doesn't just go in, is applied towards what you're already spending money towards?
I mean, the intent would, it would just, it would be reserved. It'd be reserved for Island Crest Park. And right now, the funding needs exceed the revenues, as you know, hence the conversations about a potential capital of a lid lift. Many of those ideas or suggestions being parks-related, and so it just would be dedicated to Island Crest Park. It needs additional funding. So, I wouldn't be looking to use it so I could free up funding because it needs funding, from understanding your question.
No, I understand. And it would be limited just to Island Crest Parks? I didn't understand that, the Parks Committee, that you'd said just Island Crest Park.
Yeah, that's the intent. Raise it there, the people really want us to invest back in the park, and it needs investment.
This is typical when, in the baseball world, in Little League and whatnot, that those banners, those advertising, field naming rights, it goes to the park itself, the baseball fields, that connection.
Jeff?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions that are all related. I mean, do you have, on the naming rights, where does that appear? I mean, you have a little package in here on the banners, and I'll get to that in a second. But on the naming rights, where does that show up? How visible is it? Where is it?
Right now, we've, during this fundraising commitment that we're on, there's been a lot of talk in the community about the banners and about possibly naming rights. So, right now, because it hasn't moved forward other than a couple of presentations to the Parks and Rec Subcommittee, it really isn't being advertised. Once I get direction from you, if it's a go to move forward, then it gets out there.
Yeah, maybe that's, you know, my question is, where does it, I'm going to get to the banner ads and the visibility of them in a moment because that's where I have a problem. On the naming right, I mean, where does the name, say it's Alaska Airlines Field, is that out there on Island Crest Way?
Oh, I see.
Or is it when you drop, or is it on a little sign, you know, little blade sign that arrows you into the stadium?
Yeah.
And then it's back behind, you know, the parking lot?
Correct.
How prominent is it?
Right now, it's listed in the agenda bill as a three-by-12 aluminum sign on the backstop of each field inside the park.
All right. And then, so then on the, so you, I mean, I, if you could put up the picture of that mock-up of the banners, I wonder if you had also a picture of how it looks today to compare, and do you have a mock-up of what it looks like from Island Crest Way? Because I drove down Island Crest Way today, and I can see the outfield from the street, and I think I'm seeing all those banners on Island Crest if we go forward with the plan, and I just want to make sure I'm right about that. Thank you, Ally.
So, there's a mock-up, and I don't have a picture with me with no banners, but you would imagine from the street, it would be a white line, that you could not see anything but white from the street side. So, it would be like a white strip that is four feet by eight feet times hopefully 30. And yes, you could see a white strip, but you can't see any of the print or the artwork at all.
And then I think I saw the wrong, I mean, as I'm driving south on Island Crest, I looked into the field, and I saw what I thought was this, but I could be mistaken.
That's facing Island Crest Way, that backs up.
Yeah, this is, I'm at home plate looking out to the outfield.
Okay.
Aren't there plants and trees and shrubs?
There are.
That kind of obscure the white line and the fence?
They fill up as, you know, the spring is coming. Right now, it's winter, but still, you would see a white strip.
Benson?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So, the, you know, as far as deciding whether it was appropriate advertisement, is that something that's going to be left? I know you're still in the process of developing these rules and regulations, so, I mean, are you anticipating that the public will have any kind of input? Is there going to be like an advisory committee, or is it all staff that's going to decide what's appropriate?
Per city code, the Parks Director has authority. What I was going to do is have a panel of staff review it and then make the appropriate approvals or denials. And it's pretty clear that it's family-friendly, it's, as I talked about, no tobacco or alcohol, no religious, no political messaging. But that's kind of, there's a lot, there's a lot of work that still has to be done because I'll have to develop those rules and regulations, and there's a lot of stuff out there currently through King County, through the City of Seattle, that has some things that are pretty good places to start with.
Okay. And then, can I ask one? You know, I'm looking at the questions to the council. I mean, so it's basically, does the council support the establishment of this or whatever? And are you just, I mean, I have a little trouble with the word establishment, only because there's so many things still left up in the air. So, it's hard for me to say I approve of this because there's a lot of things that haven't been really developed. So, what are you actually looking for, Bruce?
Basically, I'm looking for direction to say, "Bruce, go to work. Let's get this thing," and if we'll bring it back to council with a little more oomph to it, I'm very comfortable with that. There is a timeline. We want to try to get this thing going as baseball and everything starts up, but that's what I'd like to do, is get direction to say, "Yes, go." Or, if you feel like that's not a direction you want to go, say, "Bruce, stop."
Wendy?
So, this is the home field for the Mercer Island High School baseball team. Has the school district or PTA weighed in with a yea or nay?
Yeah, I talked, I met with school district officials, of course, they're Booster Club, but with their athletic director, and he, actually, there's some language that he was going to share with me, and he's fine with this. With the school district, they have a policy, no advertisement on school grounds, because we went down this road with South Mercer Playfields a few, several years ago, and it was a nonstarter. But they're part of the FUG, the Field User Group, which we're meeting tomorrow morning at 9:30. Feel free to come, it's open to the public at the community center. But yeah, I'm going to work with the school district on this as well.
So, this would be year-round signage, so it would also be an audience for the football teams?
We'd go, once we get started, typically it'll be March 1 through the end of October, and then we'd take them down when stormy weather comes and those kinds of things. But there will, the football will see it, soccer will see it, senior softball, ultimate frisbee, dog walkers.
Everybody.
Dan?
One last question. The 60,000, is it your intention to let that be applied towards the 150?
Hopefully not. If we're short, that would be a council discussion.
Are there any other questions? If not, I'm going to make a couple of comments. For me, I do think that there is merit in going forward and further scoping out what this would mean broadly, on both fronts, meaning in terms of the naming rights and advertisement. When it comes to the naming rights, I am more comfortable with that insofar as what I think would be the impacts to the visuals in the park, based on what you've described. I have real concerns about the impact of this type of advertising on the back fence, because when I think about Island Crest Park, it's a park for everybody. It is the home field for the high school baseball team, fully respect and appreciate so much of what they've done, and yet equally, that visual will impact the kids who are in the Dragon Park, the folks who are on the tennis courts, the people who are walking through the woods in the back. And to that extent, I think I would want to hear more from the public about what they perceive to be acceptable, with what level of return. So, while I have hesitations myself, I do think I'm certainly open to being convinced, but I would want to know that the day-to-day users in that park have an understanding of what the limitations would be, the opportunities would be, and then equally let them weigh in as to whether or not that is what they want to see in what is, in my mind, one of the most iconic and well-used parks on the island. Jeff?
So, we're just discussing tonight, we're not motioning and, yeah, so answering your question, so I'll, now, then, I guess I answered your question, I'll answer your question. The naming rights, I'm pretty comfortable with moving forward with. The banner stuff, I'm really uncomfortable with. If this park was, like in Kirkland, where the ballpark is downtown in the middle of the urban area, that's one thing. This is a residential area. I mean, I'm looking at the map now. I mean, there is a wall, I guess you're saying it's not going to have advertising on it, that I could very clearly see from Island Crest Way. I just think the vibe, what it says of this is not suburban Mercer Island ballpark. And so, 30 grand is nice, but in my mind, it's not worth it to sell out for this.
Well, if I understand this correctly, we're just, all we're being asked to do is give direction to Bruce to develop additional guidelines, and he'll come back.
Correct.
And so, we're not making any kind of decision on-
No decisions tonight, other than majority.
-on particular, whether or not we're okay with naming rights or okay with the banners. So, I'm in favor of allowing Bruce and his staff to proceed and then to come back, and we can go into greater detail.
On both fronts.
On both fronts.
Wendy, and then Dan?
Okay. So, I'm in favor with proceeding as well. My feedback would be, can we pilot it for a couple of years? Can we start with 10 or 15 banners? Can we kind of see how that goes, see what our public thinks? I'm keenly aware of the budget constraints, especially with this million-dollar lawsuit we're now funding. I feel like our parks need some investment, and I also think that this particular park is used for sports most of the year, even into the winter, and I feel like the spirit of baseball and soccer, when you go to a ballgame at the Mariners Stadium, you see these kinds of ads and banners and celebrations of businesses and nonprofits that are part of this community. So, for me, it's advertising, but it's also sort of the spirit of baseball, and as you're walking by, you can sort of walk past them into the open space and wander around. I don't think you can see them from Dragon Park, from the sculpture there. I really think the trade-off is worth it, given the revenue we need to make sure this park is able to be used by all our sports teams and users and dog walkers and folks walking by. It's a small impact for such a large park, and I think we could use the revenue, and I think our fields could definitely use the investment.
Dan?
So, I just, because Bruce has come before the Parks Committee too many times on this one, and so there's a lot of, a lot of work which has already gone into this, and I think it's really important that the council be clear on what they want Bruce to do. I don't, you know, he's not asking us to give a final thumbs up or thumbs down, but if people are going to be against one or the other of these, or think they're going to be against one or the other, I would be, I would ask the council not to send staff off to continue working on something which is, is really, already consumed a lot of time, and so if, because I, and I think Wendy was very clear on where her take was on this. I think Benson, you were more ambiguous as to where you're going to come out on it, and Jeff, I think, was clear on, he was for the naming rights but not for the signage. And so, I, I will say that based upon what I now know, I would be prepared to support the naming rights, but it would be on the notion that it's not just a one-year or five-year deal, because I think it's very confusing to have Alaska Airlines Field in 2018 and to have Delta Field in 2019 and United Field in 2020. I think that's just weird. And so, if you're going to come, if you're going to do naming rights, then it should be a long-term arrangement that assures us of, that the public doesn't think, "What the heck's going on here?" I would not support the banners at this point. I, I just, I just feel like we're giving up something for relatively very little money. We're giving up something that is, that's nice about our community, that we don't commercialize everything, and I worry about if we do this, is South Mercer next? Is Aubrey Davis after that? And so, where does it stop? And then, I don't know. And that'll be up to a future council or a future Parks Director, but I just, I'm not prepared to support going with the banners, and I'm definitely not prepared to use one penny of the money from this to meet the 150,000. I think the community needs to step up on the 150. And if, if, if it's, if improving Island Crest Park is such a high priority that we're going to make, consider making a significant change from an aesthetic standpoint, then it just unnerves me that we're unable to raise $150,000 from the community for what is an extremely important project regarding turfing the field and the lights in that field. So, I, I think that if we can't, if we can't show enough public interest to raise 150 for that, then I'm not exactly sure why we would even consider going down an advertising route. I mean, what, there's no reason to believe that that would go anywhere, then we end up with something really awful, like five signs in the outfield. That would, that would be a disaster to end up with something like that. It would look, it would look just pathetic.
For the record, 77,000 is what's needed now.
I understand that. 150 is the total.
Correct.
77 is what's left, yeah.
Okay. So, we have a little bit of a potential quandary here. So, I'm hearing Dan is not in supportive of the outfield advertising, Jeff not supportive. We have Wendy is supportive, Benson?
Well, you know, maybe I was ambiguous, but I'm in favor of the naming rights, because, I mean, obviously, it's not very conspicuous. I'm not sure, I mean, I cannot make a decision on the banners, because frankly, we haven't seen, we haven't received any details. And that's what, again, that's why I asked Bruce what we were being asked to do, was simply to give direction and direct the Parks Recreation Department to come back with more detail.
Okay. So, here's what I'm thinking, and I'm looking, I'm looking at Julie. I think we also need to respect that we're missing two voices tonight, which would be Bruce and Dave. And I would be open to a study session, which I think was a possibility, where Bruce and the team do come back and provide more detail, certainly on the naming rights for the field. I would say not an extensive amount more work or research than on the outfield advertising.
That's right. Deputy Mayor, Bertin, I definitely heard clear direction on name, there is support for Bruce outlining in more details the naming rights, but less support on the banners in the outfield. So, I think our reason in coming forward is that there is work that gets put into this type of thing, setting this up, and so we wanted to ensure that we spent our time on something that had any possibility of having your support. So, I think that's where we were coming with it. So, I do hear there is support for naming rights, but not on banners, but I also am hearing you say there's two of your colleagues not here tonight and whether or not they should weigh in. So, at this point, what I would propose doing is having Bruce return with a greater outline on the naming rights, and then we can ask again on the banners when all council members are here, but I'm going to postpone that until I hear there's more interest in that. And that's really the reason, I know there is some detail in the, in the agenda bill regarding banners, you have a visual, but again, getting into developing a program without really knowing if council supports it, I'm just not sure that's a good use of our time when we have limited resources. Yeah.
No, I think, I think that that makes good sense. It's, you know, in some ways, it's unfortunate that the people who are missing, who are on the Parks Subcommittee, because we have heard this, so, you know, definitely appreciate the amount of effort that has gone into this to date, but I'm-
Is that, is council- Is everyone comfortable with that? We'll move forward on that, and then if, when the full council is here, if there is some interest in that, we can certainly entertain bringing it back if the majority is supportive.
Okay. I'm seeing nods, so if that's clear and people are comfortable in the majority, that's the plan.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce, and thanks Elaine, who's sitting there patiently, waiting for feedback.
I'm going to sell those banners.
Okay.
Open space. She's a team player, she stayed.
She did, she stayed, she stayed. Okay, good. So, with that, we're going to move on to the next item of regular business, which would be AB 5253 Code Amendment Modifying Mercer Island- be AB 5253 Code Amendment Modifying Mercer Island City Code, Chapter 3.32, pertaining to Emergency Management Administration, first reading. So welcome, City Clerk Ally Speitz. We don't see you here very often.
I know. I don't get to speak to you very often, unless it's to get a motion correct, right? So for the record, I'm Ally Speitz, City Clerk. Before you tonight is an ordinance that amends Chapter 3.32 of the Mercer Island City Code to reflect current practice of the Police Department administering the emergency management function for the city. When the Department of Public Safety split in 2006 and became the Mercer Island Police Department and the Mercer Island Fire Department, the emergency management function was administered by the Fire Department. In 2008, the emergency management function was transferred to the Police Department, but the code was not updated. So pursuant to the City Council Rules of Procedure 5.23, the city manager is deemed as a housekeeping ordinance, and staff recommends suspending the rules of procedure and adopting Ordinance Number 17C-04 tonight at first reading.
Thank you, Ally. Are there any questions? Okay. Well, seeing none. Is there a motion to suspend City Council Rules of Procedure 5 to requiring a second reading for an ordinance?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I like these easy ones.
Great. Well, thank you, Ally. We haven't seen you for a while. That was very efficiently done.
Thank you.
But now we're going to see you for the next item.
I'm back.
Okay.
So another ordinance before you is amends Chapter 4.20 of the Mercer Island City Code to reflect the current practice required by the Washington City's Insurance Authority and Chapter 4.96 RCW for the filing and processing of claims for damages against the city. The current code, which was written in 1980, has not been updated to reflect the current practice whereby WCIA handles claims for damages on behalf of and against the city. As part of its coverage, WCIA assigns adjusters to review and approve claims submitted against its members. Claims are not reviewed or approved directly by the city or the city's appointed agent. In an email from this weekend, Councilmember Wong asked if this ordinance needs to clarify designees in my absence as the agent. And throughout the Mercer Island City Code, there are references to the city clerk as the agent for various things, such as business licensing, solicitor licensing, or initiative and referendum filings. As with all responsibilities that have been designated to a particular person, there are procedures in place if the agent is absent. The deputy city clerk is able to receive the claims as well as three other staff who know the proper procedures and process. So at this time, I would suggest leaving the language in 4.2010 and 040 as is. Again, pursuant to the City Council Rules of Procedure 5.23, the city manager has deemed this a housekeeping ordinance, and staff recommends suspending the rules of procedure and adopting the ordinance Number 17C-03 tonight at first reading.
Took the wind out of my sails, too. So is there a motion to suspend City Rules of Procedure 5.2, requiring a second reading?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Okay. I move to adopt ordinance Number 17C-03, amending Chapter 4.20 MIC, pertaining to claims for damages.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm just, so what is, I understand the procedural part about this, but there's some substantive stuff in here that which is changing. So I'd like to understand what the substantive changes are. It's like on the top of page three, there's language deleted from our current code that prohibits the council from doing certain things. And then there's language that's being struck in the middle that talks about the city manager having authority to settle certain things. And so that's much more than just, that's not just the procedure for filing. So what's, what's the substantive changes that are, that are happening here and why are they, I mean, they're probably fine, but I just don't know what they are, what's the purpose of them?
So from what I can tell historically, every claim against the city would come to the city council. There would be an agenda bill with a status of the claims that have, the city has received that are still open. And that was when we managed that ourselves. We don't do that anymore. So in the early 90s was when that stopped happening. And this, the claims no longer came to the city council for review and approval. We, staff do not have a part in it. We, we simply take the documents in and send them off to WCIA, and WCIA does all of that work for us. So I was unable to find any documentation of why we changed in the 90s, but that has been our practice for the last 30 years, that we are 25 years, that we don't actually bring the claims to the, back to the council. And so removing that language regarding that was the point in this ordinance and to give that process to WCIA.
And also, Ally, who is the city's safety slash risk management coordinator?
City Attorney Carrie Sand.
And that is, is that established somewhere else in the code or?
That's established in our compact with WCIA as a member of that risk pool. So I am the delegate for the city. I wear the risk manager hat in addition to city attorney.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions?
I just want to make a comment to say thank you for bringing these forward. I think we've realized, my realization the last 15 months is we have a lot of out-of-date stuff. And if every session, we knock down a few of this out-of-date stuff, and I know the concurrency is a big one, and we have big ones like critical areas ordinance, then we're on a really good track to cleaning things up. And, and so I commend you for that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment to say thank you for bringing these forward. I think we've realized, my realization the last 15 months is we have a lot of out-of-date stuff. And if every session, we knock down a few of this out-of-date stuff, and I know the concurrency is a big one, and we have big ones like critical areas ordinance, then we're on a really good track to cleaning things up. And so I commend you for that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. Measure passes. Moving on to the next item of business, AB 5260, which will be Carrie Sand, our city attorney, addressing code amendment, adopting Chapter 2.50, pertaining to donations, the first reading.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Bertin, council members. So in continuation of housecleaning items, this is yet another one, and we will try to bring more of these forward because we have quite a few. This is an ordinance proposed to have a formal process for the acceptance of donations. Obviously, historically, the city has accepted numerous donations. We consider this a formality to comply with one of two state laws that address this topic. So there's one specific to code cities such as Mercer Island, and that's in 35A, point 11, point 040 of the RCW, which does not specifically require passage of an ordinance that outlines acceptance procedures. However, there is another RCW on point regarding donations, and that is RCW 35.21.100. And that RCW says that every city and town by ordinance may accept any money or property donated, devised, or bequeathed to it and carry out the terms of the donation devised or bequest, if within the powers granted by law. And if no terms or conditions are attached, then the city or town may expend it or use it for any proper municipal purpose. And so this ordinance, again, generally follows the process contemplated in state law. And the intent of it is to simplify the process of accepting donations. And we don't have a threshold number in here saying, you know, for example, any donation under $10,000 can be accepted by the city manager. Instead, the way we have presented this, and again, we welcome your discussion about this, but it would be a proposed new Chapter 2.50 in the Mercer Island City Code. And it defines donation to refer to any money or property, real or personal, donated, devised, or bequeathed, with or without restriction, to the city of Mercer Island. Often donors do state their intent. For example, the city recently was the recipient of a generous donation from a deceased resident who, in her last will and testament, said she wanted all of her household belongings donated to the YFS thrift shop and sold there. And so that intent is carried out. So when it's really a specific bequest, it is carried out consistent with the donor's wishes. And sometimes we do get donations that don't have such specific intent. And so those just simply go into the general fund for any proper municipal purpose. But as you'll see in this draft ordinance, I'm looking at Exhibit 1 to AB 5260 at Page 2. And in Section 2.50.020, Acceptance of Donations, under A, Monetary Donations, the city manager is authorized to accept those if the purpose and conditions are within the powers granted by law to the city. And if no terms are specified, then it could be used for any municipal purpose. In subsection B, Non-Monetary Donations, again, the city manager is authorized to determine the appropriateness, usefulness, and value to the city of such donations. And then in 3, Non-Acceptance of Donation, it gives the city manager the option to decline a donation if it's not consistent with city policies or it's not consistent with the law. And so as presented, we believe this just, again, takes care of a much-needed housekeeping item to make the acceptance of donations more streamlined and hopefully efficient.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Benson?
Yeah, I had sent to the city attorney just a couple of comments or questions. For instance, on that 2.50.020, Paragraph C, I guess, I'm just curious, instead of may, any reason why it should not be shall, since presumably if it's something that is not consistent with the policies and plans and goals, the city manager should not accept it?
I think that that is a fine word substitution if the council wants to instead say shall decline. We had the word may in there, frankly, just replicating other cities' ordinances that we had seen. But if the council's more comfortable with shall instead of may, I think that's perfectly fine.
You know, one other suggestive change, again, is maybe nitpick or whatever it was, to add at the end of that particular phrase or that paragraph, that the city manager would also decline or be required to decline to accept a donation if the city council decided not to accept that donation, irrespective of what the city manager decided. So.
So just to, to clarify, Councilmember Wong, if I may, and for everyone's benefit, Councilmember Wong was proposing to add another sentence at the end of 020B, Non-Monetary Donations.
Oh, I'm not going to.
And, are you sure? Okay. Because I thought your add-on to C related to the B. I thought they were related.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. So he was proposing to add, after it says the city manager is authorized to determine the appropriateness, usefulness, and value to the city of non-monetary donations, he wanted to add something to the effect that the city council's decision on any recommendation given by the city manager shall be final, to make it really clear what happens if the city manager's recommendation is not followed by the council, that in the end, the council's decision prevails. Is that correct? Did I capture your intent?
Yeah, it was. And frankly, I further thought about it. It's probably implied. It's like I didn't, I wasn't going to bring it up. And so.
Well, and then it relates to the change, I think, that you were suggesting in C, Non-Acceptance of Donation. If we change may to shall, it would then read, the city manager shall decline to accept a donation if such donation is not consistent with the policies, plans, goals, or ordinances of the city of Mercer Island, comma, if acceptance of same is contrary to law, comma, or if city, or if the city council decides not to adopt, or not to accept such donation. You wanted to add that, if the council does not want to accept it, right?
If I could, thank you. Perhaps because I think the city manager would be guided by your policies, plans, goals, ordinances, or maybe their, comma, council direction. You know, I mean, I think you want to be clear, it's ultimately, at the end of the day, council's going to decide. But obviously, it's through the city manager. I am taking your direction and applying that to this. So rather than add that, I wonder if that would satisfy Councilmember Wong and get to his intent? So it would be policies, plans, goals, ordinances, or council direction.
That'd be fine. Are you changing may to shall on that one?
And you should, right, you can strengthen that by shall, but also adding goals, ordinances, or council direction
That'd be fine.
Of the city. Okay.
So can you two help me understand what you're trying to do here? Would the council have to look at every donation and say yea or nay?
Which is why I'm suggesting council direction. That is something I can get from the council at a meeting or in my one-on-ones, that sort of thing. But I don't really envision needing to come to you for a lot of those items. I don't imagine we really don't accept a lot of things. But on the other hand, I think my intention there is if you have something that isn't in alignment with where, where the council wants to go, I certainly wouldn't go, I wouldn't be contrary to that. Does that make sense? I would look for your feedback before. I wouldn't accept it.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? I hopefully, yeah.
So what do other cities do?
So I was talking to Julie about this, trying to flesh out the intent and when this might come up. So for example, when I advised another city who had received as a donation a very used vehicle that was really so used, it wasn't going to necessarily be a great addition to the city's fleet. And what we did was choose, in that case, to dispose of it as surplus property. And we basically got the surplus value of it as cash and just deposited that into the general fund, because it wasn't a, a vehicle that was really fleet-worthy, if you will. And so, for example, decisions like that, that's something that the city manager could run past the council as far as the disposition. Often the donors don't specify exactly what we do with it. They just want to make it available for the city's use and the city's discretion. And that's not contrary to law, obviously, making that type of a judgment call, but it's not necessarily in keeping with our policies to bring in a vehicle to the fleet that isn't exactly up to par with the rest of the, the fleet. And so that's an example of where that discretion comes in.
I could potentially also see the council wanting to decline something that comes with conditions of, you know, main, you know, okay, you're, you get a swimming pool, but the condition is you have to maintain it, you have to operate it. Maybe you would decline that. That would be something I would want to come before the council and to get your direction on. Right?
So Dan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with what Benson and you've been talking about. I'm more concerned about A and B and just how these work. For example, let's talk about B. The example Carrie you gave is that the woman who died and will to us all her household belongings, which are non-monetary donations. So the way I read this, if I read it literally, Julie could not accept that without first coming to the council. I don't assume that's the intention, but that's the way it seems to read if I read it literally. And I know that's not the intention. So I'm a little worried that we may have to, we may have to think about that wording. And I'm equally concerned about A, monetary. If I read this, say that, that, you know, John Smith makes a $100,000 donation to the city and says that it has to be used to put in a sign at the Island Crest Ball Field saying this is the John Smith Field. And under this, it says that if Julie or whoever's the city manager was to say, you know, thanks for $100,000, and the sign will be up there in a week, and there's no requirement to come to the council. So basically, money could be expended, which is completely So, basically, money could be expended, which is completely, which is not provided for in the budget. So, I mean, we pass a budget, and, yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how this all works out in practice, because I'm just looking, you've got this situation with monetary contributions Julie can do, she doesn't have to get council approval for anything, she can, and I shouldn't say Julie, the city manager has to, can just do what she or he determines is appropriate, and just go and do it. And, but non-monetary, you know, if I read that literally, if I go down to the thrift shop tomorrow and donate a chair, then technically that has to come to the city council. So, I just think that maybe the wording needs a little help here, but I know that's not the intention, but.
Hello. On any significant donation where it's not even budgeted, right, we're going to come back to the council for you to appropriate the actual expenditure of that money. And so, it'll come back to you.
No, I understand, but that's not what it says, that's my only point. I understand that's what you're telling me, but I'm, you know, I don't want 20 years from now, the future Jeff Sanderson to say, "Well, I'm glad you came and fixed that housekeeping problem, because the ordinance was not written properly." I just, I mean, let's, if it is, let's do, let's have an ordinance that reflects what we're actually going to do, both as to monetary and non-monetary, and that's all I'm trying to get at.
I have to admit that I am not clear in terms of when the city manager would need to come to council, based on the wording that has flowed between us all at this point. So I don't know if I should be looking at Carrie, Julie, or Benson at this moment.
Well, based on the, based on the, I think I'm going to field this one. Based on the feedback that we've heard on this, what was intended to be a first and final reading, it sounds like we need to have a second reading and add some refinement. So, one of the things that I would suggest we bring back for council consideration, I'm looking for direction tonight, is some sort of monetary threshold that is a bright-line rule, under which we do not have to come to the council, above which we do, just something that's bright-line, because frankly, the whole purpose of this, from my perspective, was twofold. It was to have a formal acceptance of donation ordinance consistent with state law, number one, but number two, to create an efficient process going forward. So I don't want a process that is going to either be unclear or inefficient. So, can council provide some direction about what would be a good bright-line threshold in terms of dollar value for monetary, as well as the value, it may be harder to pin down for non-monetary, but just, you know, a fair-market value approximation where you'd like to either have city manager just efficiently handle it, or instead have it brought back to council for acceptance and discussion.
How often do we get these donations?
That's very hard for me to say. So, I can tell you that the city has received land, we have been the beneficiary of several devices and bequests, but it's really hard for me to say with, you know, accuracy how frequently these come up. They seem to come in batches, so we'll get a few, and then there'll be a long dry spell, and then we'll get a few. It's hard to say.
But not too many cash donations, or I wouldn't think.
Yeah, but that's, just to make a technical distinction, that's to the foundation, not the city, and the foundation is a separate entity.
Or Island Crest Park.
But Island Crest Park, where we've been receiving donations for Island Crest Park Ballfields, as Bruce said, now, the amount remaining is now 77,000 out of, I think, 150 that they were trying to raise for that. So, there's already been a sizable dent in that number, based on generous donations from residents.
Well, so, I think all of us are looking a little uncertain. What I'm, so what I'm hearing is there, basically what you're looking for is some, we call it a bright-line threshold, from council, under what circumstances we would want to be queried as to the disposition of some.
We can propose one, if that's acceptable to the council. I thought if you had some inclination tonight about what that threshold number would be, or we can propose one for your consideration.
I think, I think on non-monetary, if you want a threshold, I think it should be an objective threshold, which says, any non-monetary contribution which is convertible, which the city's going to convert to cash, then you, then you don't have to come to the council at all for, because that's the same as a cash contribution. So, if someone's donating their household goods, and it's just going to the thrift shop or whoever, and they're going to sell it, then it's the same as cash. So, to me, that's, that's an easy, that's an easy rule to put. For a non-monetary that is, is not going to be converted to cash, you know, throw out a number, $5,000, something that has some value that is, you know, it's something that's going to be, end up as a statue in the lobby here, or something like that, that's fine.
Would $10,000 be okay? I'm only wanting to go up a little bit higher because of.
$10 is fine.
$10 is in my head.
$10 is a nice number.
Okay.
On monetary, my, my only thing is, is, to me, it's not a, you can, you can receive any dollar amount you want, I mean, you can be up to a million dollars, it'd be great. It's just how the money's expended, and, and I think there has to be, if, if the money is going to be expended for something that is outside the budget, then, then I think there has to be some, some sort of talking with the council, because we passed the budget. And every time Chip deviates from the budget, he comes back to us and says, "I'm spending $500 more here, or I'm, or I'm taking money from this account to that account," and I'm not sure why gift would be any different. So if you're going to expend it for something that's already been budgeted, I think that's fine. If you're not going to expend it, if there's a condition of it which says, "You have to spend it for this particular project, and it's not a budgeted project," I don't think you should be able to do that without coming back to us. So, I think that's sort of a bright-line way of doing that, that the amount is irrelevant, it's how you're going to expend it, and if it's going to be expended for something that we've already approved or will approve, great. If we haven't approved it yet, it's not part of the budget, then I think Chip has to treat it like, or you have to treat it like any kind of budget change and, and talk to us.
Understood. And then, also, I just wanted to point out, with regard to non-monetary donations, and this also ties into Part C, Non-Acceptance of Donation, with regard to a land donation, for example, I just wanted to remind the council that the Open Space Conservancy Board Trust has policies regarding land acquisition, and sometimes it is not in keeping with our policies to accept certain land donations. For example, if it's a remnant parcel, not connected to any existing park or trail, that would be difficult for the parks crew to maintain, that may not be land that we would want to add to our inventory for Parks and Recreation purposes. But those are the types of considerations that we would bring to council's attention at the time. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, in case that wasn't on your radar.
Okay. So, if I understand correctly, we do need a second reading, although we have passed a motion that suspended the second reading. No? Did we not do that yet? Okay, good, I'm glad we don't have to undo anything that we've done.
We have not gotten to that.
Okay, well, good, I'm glad, I'm glad that you're all keeping track of this.
So, if a motion could be made to move this to second reading at the council's next meeting, that would be great.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? See none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Motion passes, we will see it at second reading. Thank you, Carrie. Who knew that accepting gifts would be so complicated? Okay, so that concludes regular business for the evening. We can now move on to other business and council member absences. Is there a motion to excuse Mayor Bassett and Councilmember Lisa Tyner? Said with enthusiasm. All in favor? Aye opposed? Passes. Okay. Planning schedule, we'll turn it over to Julie.
Yes, council, if I could get some direction, so, well, first of all, we have a standing executive session on your regular business meetings, usually at 5:30 to 7:00, but I'd like you to consider perhaps giving me some direction on whether or not, there's two items currently on your regular business, but I'm wondering if really they're better for study session items. So those two items are the outdoor I-90 sculpture gallery name change, and the Parks and Rec Department name change. So, I know these items have been before the Parks and Rec Subcommittee, but again, the full council, I'm not sure how, if they're, if they're fully informed and ready to kind of make a decision on any of that. That's, so it's a question mark. Does that make sense to have it be a study session from 6:00 to 7:00?
Well, I would clarify that outdoor I-90, I believe, has only been to the Subcommittee.
Oh, it's only been, okay, so, okay, got it. And I know maybe the Parks Rec Department name change has come up, maybe at your planning session, so that definitely has come up. So, just really looking for your direction on how you want to really schedule March 6. So, we do have, you have a guest, King County Councilmember Claudia Balducci is coming, so she is planning to visit with you for approximately 10 minutes. We do have two public hearings, so we want to be mindful of that. And those are your public hearings on citing of essential public facilities within the I-90 right-of-way, and then land use and development to ensure transparency currency. So those two public hearings you have, and then you have these two other items, so I'm really looking for direction on whether or not there's interest in really having, maybe at least having the outdoor sculpture gallery be a study session item or not. So, looking for your input.
Benson?
Yeah, I'm fine with me. I'm not fully informed of that issue.
The Sculpture Garden.
But that's, I mean, it's, it's not really worthy of a study session, I mean, that's worthy of a memo from Diane or someone to the whole council, just explaining what's going on. I mean, Diane briefed the Parks Committee, Diane Mortenson briefed the Parks Committee on this, I think she could do a one-page memo, and that would, that would be, that would give everyone the background they need on this. It's not a very complicated issue at all. It's a very, that part. The Parks Department naming issue, I'm not sure that's a study session issue, that we just got to make a decision on it, one way or the other, what we're, whether we want to pursue that or not, and it's, I mean, I think we've, we've been talking about this for a year, and we should bite the bullet one way or the other and make a decision. Yeah.
So, counterpoint to that is that I don't know if our public has heard about the name changes for the sculpture gallery, and I think it has been a year since we talked about it in planning committee, so, or planning session, so I think it would be useful to have a study session for our public to hear what we're thinking about, provide input as appropriate, gives them a chance to read it, think about it. Maybe they don't even know what a sculpture gallery is on I-90, right? I didn't know until I heard about it. So, in the spirit of public engagement and education, I think we should have a study session about both of these name changes related to our open space.
Well then.
Go ahead.
No, I just, I don't, I don't, I mean, we, study sessions are for complicated issues where we need staff, you know, it's like tonight on the residential, that's, those are complicated items where staff comes forward. When we had the, when we had this problem with the boil water thing, those were complicated issues, we needed, that's a, I mean, we should reserve study sessions for things that are complicated, and these, these may, one of the, one of the two of these may be controversial. I don't think the other, I don't think the naming of the Sculpture Garden, I mean, I, it's, we need to decide whether we want to put a name on it or not, that's really, and then if, if the, the woman who, who Parks is recommending that we name it after, if that's the appropriate person to do it. But it's not, it's not the type of thing you'd do in a study session, in my opinion. It's, so, it just seems like that's not, that's, I cold-heartedly agree that study sessions, we should do more study sessions, but, but hopefully for, for very substantive things when we do them.
Benson, Jeffany?
No, I think we should leave it where it is and just cover them and just get it done. And I think, I mean, a memo, I mean, the agenda bill is kind of the memo that leads us into it, and we just do it.
Benson?
Certainly, I think, based on what I've heard, I mean, the Sculpture Park, I mean, that sounds like it could be something that's done, you know, in an agenda bill or something, and obviously, the Parks people can be involved in that discussion, so it doesn't sound like would probably be warrant, an hour and a half, or an hour, you know, whatever period of time you have scheduled. The other one, you know, I don't know if that is going to be actually more controversial or whatever, I'm not sure where I fall on that one. You know, I'm not sure, frankly, again, whether or not that's worthy of a study session. It's certainly probably worthy of more dialogue or discussion with the community, perhaps, but, you know, is a study session the right for them? I don't know.
Yeah, just as a reminder, the, the name change was raised twice, I don't know if this is helping or hindering. The first time was within the planning session a year ago, and then there was some discussion over the minutes from that planning session in terms of what the intent was. So, it was there twice. Now, what I, I think that the sculpture gallery name change, I would agree, through the agenda bill, I think it probably lays itself out fairly well. I think there's going to be more debate and discussion when it comes to a potential name change for Parks and Rec. I'm not convinced that a study session changes anything at this point, so my, my preference would be to keep both of them on as regular business, and let them, let them follow as they do.
Okay. I feel like I have.
Do you, do you feel like you have general consensus?
I do, thank you.
The, the other thing about that agenda, traditionally, I don't believe we've done Arch's consent calendar items, or at least every time Mike, Mike Zero pulled them off consent. It's particularly this year, we, you know, we've significantly increased the amount of money we're putting in towards our, towards Arch. It might be worth our while to have Art Sullivan just talk to us a little bit, if he has time, rather than just put this on the consent calendar.
So, Allison Van Gorp and I have been working on scheduling this, and we've had to move it a couple of times, just because everybody does this at the exact same time, and so, Arch staff's trying to get enough people to every meeting, so actually leaving it on consent is their preference. They will have a staff person here, but they need to then go to another meeting pretty quickly after that. But if, we can, I definitely can ask Allison if it can be moved to regular business, but I would think it would need to be before the public hearings and the moratoria.
Which, which is fine, I mean, we need to accommodate their staff. I'm, I'm just saying, to put it on consent suggests that then we have to pull it off consent, if there's no one here for Arch to talk about it, then we're, so, then we don't have, but if, if you're going to have someone here anyway, then.
Yeah, I have to confirm that, I'm not sure, so.
But putting it first on the agenda would be great.
Well, and I would say, in general, given the, the level of funding increase that council communicated through '17 and '18 budget, at some point, it would be good to get an update. So whether or not we need to move this forward on the basis of, you know, their operational requirements, I think at some point, within the next six months, I would like to understand what they're doing and what the needs are, particularly as they align to a lot of the other initiatives going on, not only in Seattle, but in the East Side in general. Is there anything else that we're calling out?
And you're going to add to the August, the April 17th agenda now, the, what we passed earlier in the, in the evening?
Okay. Good, well, if we've gone ahead and covered the planning schedule, we move on to board appointments, and there are none this evening, and then council member reports. So, Dan, do you want to start?
Nothing since last Tuesday.
Ditto. Nothing new.
Okay, nothing on my part as, as well, I think it's just a quick reminder, again, that there's going to be the Residential Code Forum, that's on Saturday morning at West Mercer at 9:30. And with that, we are now adjourned at 9:03.